Litigation authorization. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Janet seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, I'd like to move for a fifteen to twenty-minute adjournment to give the trustees a chance to read the information provided by council. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we are in recess. We'll reconvene and go back into session. The next item on the agenda is parking lot bids. What's that?
Did we actually approve the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that part, even though I'm sitting here. Sorry.
Okay.
You don't need to approve the agenda because the agenda's set. Go ahead.
I'd like to make that motion to approve awarding to the lowest bidder, EF Wilkinson &amp; Sons, Inc., for $192,599.50 for the new parking lot contingent on the township receiving all necessary government approvals.
I'll support that.
Support by?
I'll support that.
Can? Any discussion? It's pretty straightforward to me.
Yep.
Could you mention the last part of that again? Contingent of?
Contingent on the township receiving all necessary government approvals.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sewer requests.
I thought we were going to do road repairs.
Oh, I'm sorry, road repairs, you're correct. Getting complaints from people on Rainbow Trails End.
Rainbow's End Trail.
What's that?
Rainbow's End Trail.
Okay, Rainbow's Ends Trail. And we got some problems with the road washing out. We spent quite a bit of money on gravel already, but we didn't have enough money left to fix that road, and it really needs emergency repair. And the Road Commission recommends it and says that if we can provide them $2,500 quickly, they can get it before the road restrictions are put in place. I do, there is enough money in the cost center. I just wanted to get approval from the board because we had already, we had already spent a considerable amount of money on gravel. But there is enough money in the roads and bridges to cover the $2,500. Does anyone want to make a motion to repair the road?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jan makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Janet seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one is the sewer requests. Normally, we do a motion first, but I do need, I just want to get the board...
Can I just go back? I just want to make sure you got the motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it's a motion to repair Rainbow Ends Trail?
Rainbow Ends Trail.
Rainbow Ends Trail with an S, for $2,500.
To provide the Road Commission $2,500 to repair.
Alright, thank you.
The worst part of the road is like when you first come on it from Big Bear, using it.
Yeah, but down a little further, I got pictures that the Road Commission sent me.
But that is also from Big Bear with their side-by-sides going up and down the road.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, I don't really think I should vote on that because I don't want the road.
Well, we are voting.
Yeah, you already voted, don't worry about it.
I didn't say...
It was unanimous. So, I do want to give some explanation before anybody makes a motion. It's my understanding that when the beauty salon next to Drust Chocolates was torn down, that became a vacant lot. And when that becomes a vacant lot and you cap the sewer, Mr. Waldron's O&amp;M stopped. Well, we have two parcels now that have been demolished, and the sewer has been capped. So, we have a request in front of you from Merrimont and Wright Real Estate to suspend the O&amp;M fees, as was in the case of Mr. Waldron. They're also asking for a refund since the date of demolition. Does anyone want to make a, want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Janet makes the motion to?
Make the motion to stop the O&amp;M fees and to reimburse back to the date of demolition.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Janet will second. I'm sure we have a discussion.
Oh, sure.
Go ahead.
So...
You do the billing.
In the process of doing the billing, I have been auditing the accounts that were inactive. Some of it makes sense in that it's vacant property, totally unapproved. So, while there was a sewer account set up for it because there is no sewer there, they've never been charged. I have heard conflicting information. There is nothing in writing in the office that I've been able to locate that would give us solid direction on how this is supposed to work. So, I would say to the next board, please go back through the ordinance and update it as necessary so that everyone knows what the rules of engagement are and that they are clear going forward. Mr. Waldron got the benefit of buying a second parcel, tearing down a property that had two REUs assigned to it, and then building a new building and putting that property back into service. We have not to date, he understands that those lots were combined. I don't have paperwork for that.
I do.
Okay, good, good, awesome. Do we also have a change of use form?
No.
So, part of the problem here is that as this sewer district gets more complex, we will have more accounts to manage. And setting up a process that absolutely captures change of use, whether it's I've torn the building down and capped off the sewer temporarily, or I've put in a building that requires four REUs on a property that only has one assigned to it currently, is right now on the owner's system. So, for Wildwood Coffee, it worked swimmingly. They switched it from an office building to a coffee shop. It went from one REU to two REUs. They filled out the forms, they paid the money. That is not happening universally, and we need to find a way to do that. In a residential area, it's simple. We get a C of O. The assessment changes. We all know that some of these living in a house on a property that didn't have a house, and things happen. But in the commercial district, that's particularly difficult. So, I was given the impression that once the REUs are assigned, they have to be paid. Unfortunately, for Mr. Black, Merrimont Property Management, he, his staff had someone call me several times, and I answered it the same way every time, that once the REUs are assigned, it's my understanding that we have to continue to bill it. So, this is, again, a situation where some documentation would have been extremely helpful.
Yeah, well, it's just not fair to charge, not charge one person and charge everybody else. But the fact of the matter is, it's vacant land.
Well, for them, it's vacant land. That still doesn't solve the issue of the, what we're going to do with that second account that is still inactive on a property where there is now a commercial building that is in service.
Well, Mr. Waldron, another former board member, has been helping me through this because they have the history of it all. And the problem we have is that the county just issues the building permits without a requirement to have the sewer signed off on. And I know that Craig addressed it, the former boards addressed this with the county. And when I first was appointed, I went up to see Jeff Lawson to say, "Look, you know, we need some kind of mechanism that you don't award a building permit without having checked the change-of-use application to score a sewer box."
Well, and I...
And he said, his response was, "We can't do that by law."
So, there is another mechanism that happens. Unfortunately, it has a much longer tail. So, if someone moves into a property, think of the Dairy Mark, for example. So, it had an owner, and that owner sold. Owner A has a parcel number assigned to it for the purposes of personal property. Owner, and that stays with the owner, not with the property. Owner B gets a new parcel number for the personal property. Owner A says, "I've moved out." Owner B says, "I've moved in." So, it's part of the personal property tax rule. And I think rather than going to the county to try and get this information, we would be better served by working with our assessor to look at those changes in the personal property tax rule. Now, the problem with that is, is that the only, only local government in the county that has worse records for personal property than us is the city of Chaboyden. And I've heard that many, many times in the short time I've been here. It will take a lot of time and energy and effort and hours to clean that up. So, but I would say that's the better way to go.
The problem we have, Board, is that because we have no formal process to know what's going on, it just so happened that I heard about the coffee shop coming in, and I had to call Scott, the owner. And of course, he complied right away, but you know, there's no, I don't know. There's no mechanism that these people are required to file a change-of-use application, so if...
But they are required to pay personal property tax or file an exemption from personal property tax.
Yeah.
So, that part is helpful. I would say the thing that is holding us back as a township, more than anything, is that many of the things we know, we know because somebody knows them and they walked around and kept it in their head. And when they're available to come here or talk to us on the phone and share that knowledge, it's great. But it would be super helpful to us currently and to future administrations if these things were actually written down and captured in part of the sewer ordinance.
I just wish the county would help us. I can't speak for Craig, but I seem to recall he told me, he just doesn't understand their line of thinking. If you don't mind, could I ask Ms. Fisher if she has any comments?
It has been a struggle since day one.
And Craig said the same thing.
Just trying to, you know, you have to just keep track of it.
Yeah, for example, when someone down the road added another cabin, I just happened to hear about it. They never filed, they never asked.
Now, with the change, well, with change of ownership, also, there was a name change, and that could be flagged. Yeah, not just personal property.
Right.
But there's nothing saying that's a change of use, though.
Correct.
And even with personal property, it doesn't say it's a change of use.
No, but it does, it does say that something has, if a particular address has someone assigned to it for personal property tax, and that changes.
Right, right.
Then, then, you know, then it's worth a go, look-see, right?
It should always, but...
But you can't, as the sewer plant grows, it would be very expensive to have someone who's, and not well-received for someone to go nosing around in every piece of property looking for change of use for sewer.
Yeah, I've talked to Sue about this, but I've really talked to Craig a lot. You know, he's been quite helpful on the sewers. And he just doesn't understand, and I agree with him, why it's not legal to require that. You know, I don't doubt Jeff Lawson at all, but I would recommend that a new board get the township attorney involved and is it truly not legal to require this? They require it for the health department. You've got to have a certificate from the health department to get a building permit, right?
And there's also those, like up-and-down plumber, that if they need a new septic, they're supposed to hook up to the sewer because they're so, so many feet away from the sewer line.
Yeah.
And they allow somebody else just to put in a new septic. So, there's, there's no help from the county at all.
Well, I would recommend that you think about...
I have a question.
Putting that on the checklist. Yes, ma'am?
How does the Inverness Township handle theirs? Because they have the sewer, and they have change-of-use all the time, commercial, residential, residential, commercial, whatever. I will retell next. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any questions, Jay?
I just, excuse me, I just want to restate the motion as to stop the O&amp;M fees and reimburse back fees to the date of demolition for those particular properties.
Correct.
The next item is reimbursements. We do not need to address that because that was put in with the bills, and that involved an emergency check for the TDA to do the, what was it, the polls?
Spectrum.
Right, so it's in the bills, so we can skip right to the bills if you don't mind. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I will move to pay the bills.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Alright, let me... Any questions on the bills? Now, I see we got, we paid, we paid DH Services for the gutters. How was that job?
It was great. We were happy with the work. We did add some stuff to it. We had them add netting screens to the gutters here on the back because of the pine needles, and also the height to where you can't reach that with just a simple ladder. Cleaning it would require running a lift. So, but we were happy with their service, and they did exactly what they stated.
So, in this check run, we have a check to Anavan and DH Services. Is there anything else that's in here that will be submitted for reimbursement from, for the building?
I don't believe so. I think it's just those two.
So, $10,000 to Anavan and $18,000 to DH Services, approximately.
And how much was the bill for Spectrum? I did want to point out to the board that the DDA board did approve that expenditure there at last meeting. Did we able to get the other?
I was not.
Alright. Okay, any other questions about bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any questions, Jay?
No, no, no. We approved it, so the DDA did, and still went out the door under our directions.
Yes.
The next item is litigation authorization. I handed out the information I got from the township attorney. Some of you have seen it, his recommendations, some of you have not. There's quite a few ways to proceed here. This involves a parking lot. Basically, a resident has filed suit against the Chaboyden County Planning and Zoning Commission. Our council has recommended that we take action. I sent it to some of you. Some of you probably were traveling here when you got it. Is there a motion?
What are her options?
I'd have to go get them. He's recommending that we should be a party to this lawsuit.
So, in other words, you're looking for a motion to authorize an answer to this complaint?
I'll make the motion.
Who thinks that we should intervene?
So, I'd like to move to have the township attorney intervene on behalf of the board in the appeal filed by Kelly, I'm sorry, well, Kelly, I don't...
Ashford.
Ashford, yeah. Challenging the, or Kelly's challenging the commission for the approval of the unsatined plan with conditions, so...
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
You'll support that. Any discussion? I think we should include damages and legal fees.
I agree with that.
Is that a separate motion?
No, we got to dispose of your motion first. Unless you want to amend it.
Or have a separate motion just to...
Who seconded it?
I did.
I did. So, let's just vote on this motion then. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other motions in regards to this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed to have our lawyer look into recouping our legal fees and our damages.
Okay. Is there a second?
Are we authorizing someone specifically to do that, Janet?
The township attorney.
Township attorney.
Yeah, yeah, restate your motion.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that being a party to this lawsuit, that we seek damages and legal fees.
Is there a second?
For how long? Through, like...
I just, we can discuss it if we get a second.
I'll second it.
Get a second? Now, discussion, go ahead.
How long, how long do you think this process is going to be?
Fairly quickly.
Yeah, as quick as possible, hopefully.
Is there, is there a meeting scheduled for this?
A meeting by who?
By the, by the court. Is it on the docket?
Yeah, it's, there's a case number and everything. So, we would actually become, if I understood the attorney correctly, we would become a party, along with the county, because we have an overriding interest, according to him. And you can read the confidential information that I sent you from the attorney that lays out all the reasoning. Any other discussion?
So, all legal fees and damages would be recouped till the end of this...
Well, you can only ask the court for that.
For example, you...
He would ask the court for that.
Right, but that's what you're...
That's what we're asking.
Until, yes, until it takes itself.
Right. Because there could be some damages due to increased costs. Okay, so, any other discussion?
No.
Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public comment?
Hello, my name is Patrick McGinnis. I'd just like to remind the board and everyone in attendance that our supervisor's next court appointment is November 7th at 8:45, where he's been indicted on two criminal counts. I think there's more to come.
Oh, yeah.
As far as the parking lot, that's in discussion. In looking at years of photographs that I've done, I've yet to find one photograph, regardless of the events going on downtown where there was not available parking already.
You're asleep.
In looking at the recent pictures, about all I can determine, the need for this parking lot after the board had already approved the motion for Waldron to buy part of that property, and then they backed out on it, is to help the owner of the old lumberyard. Because if that parking lot goes in, he is not required then to have off-street parking, which will allow him to increase the size of his building by at least 30 percent. So, to me, it just sounds like the board, once again, is cutting favors to the friends... Yeah, go ahead and smirk, Mr. Supervisor, who's under indictment for crimes with more to come, both civil and criminal. And this is going to add to about half a million dollars that this township board has ran out for the members of this community, and they are leaving because they're too gutless to run against opposition. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Anne Couture. I'm an environmental professional, retired here in Indian River. And I'd just like to briefly address the parking lot location. As we know, that when they improved the parking for the trail, they included some contaminated soil that's been contained on the property that's subject to the parking lot. I was involved in my whole career with the development and implementation of Michigan's environmental cleanup laws. 1995, we changed the whole liability scheme to one from joint, strict joint and several liability, to one wherein you can protect yourself from that by undertaking certain things when you are acquiring or just managing property. And so, you can acquire contaminated property without liability for cleaning it up. But one of the key elements here is to exercise due care, to protect everyone from unacceptable exposures. The whole scheme is based on, you know, RISB. And so, it's really important to me, even though I'm retired, that we continue to make sure that this really, really critical element of our liability scheme, and that's due care. And so, I hope that your bid, request for bids, as well as the bids themselves, accommodated the cost of, you know, compliance with due care and that all of the contaminated soils handled properly during construction to eliminate exposure of not just the workers, but the people who may be using the trail, anti-citizens, and really protecting the township from liability. Because if you fail to exercise your due care, then you can fall right into... Because if you fail to exercise your due care, then you can fall right into strict joint and several liability for actually cleaning up the contamination. So, I am hoping, I don't know if you can answer this question, but I'm hoping that the bid documents accommodate the due care and integrate due care construction management issues into the document, so that it's not like a standalone document here, that the, you know, that the contractors can look at the bid specs and undertake appropriate due care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Just referring to the comments about the criminal charges against Mr. Grayman. This is the third time this has happened. And every time, it costs the taxpayers of this township money. The same group do it every time. You know what the first two turned up? Nothing. It's gonna turn up nothing again, and it's gonna cost the taxpayers of this town money every time. And it's all just vindictiveness. It's personal agenda. And it's bullshit. And as a taxpayer of this town, I'm sick and tired of it. They're leaving in November. Let them leave. The biggest thing that's gonna happen, they're gonna get a couple thousand dollar fine, and it's gonna get thrown out. That's not even gonna happen. So, as you're gonna sue for damages on the parking lot, you need to do it for this too. As a taxpayer of this town, I want the money back. If it gets thrown out, I want the money back. And people need to get sued for that money. Because I'm tired of paying for this vindictiveness pettiness. And it's bullshit.
Public comment?
All by Democrats.
Thank you.
Shut up!
Sorry, I just think it's...
Don't talk to me! I didn't talk to you! You shut up! Those are my comments!
Sit down.
I'll leave. I gotta look at this chat of bitches.
I think it's important for the people in the room, the people watching the streaming, and the people watching the video.
Excuse me.
May I continue?
Okay, now you may.
I think it's important that the people in the room, the people watching the stream, and those that watch this recorded, understand that the same people that appeared at a road commission meeting and objected to the road commission abandoning parking on River Street because we had such a dire parking problem, are the same people now that are objecting to the parking lot. So, which position that you put forth in a public meeting was correct? The one in front of the road commission, or the one now? Do we have a parking problem, or don't we? Because you're playing both sides of the fence, and it's very obvious.
Public comment?
I'm Kelly Ashford.
Push the button, please.
Which one? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I need to hold the button?
No, no, you're fine.
No.
Thank you. My name's Kelly Ashford. I live at 6016 Martha Street. I just wanted to let you know that the appeal that I filed on Monday is against the Chaboy County Planning Commission. It's in regards to the site plan review.
Could you speak up a little bit, Kelly?
Yeah, I'll pull it right forward.
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, the appeal that I filed on Monday is with the site plan review at the Chaboy County Planning Commission. And why I did that is because there were a few different things that they didn't follow through with at the site plan review level. You all presented what you wanted to present, and then they had diligence that they were supposed to do, and there was a few things in there that they did not do and they did not address. And I do want those questions answered, because the sidewalk in question does go across my property. Yes, it's in the road right of way. I still have questions about the location and the spacing at the corner. And the road commission did present to me, even though it's not in the agreement that they agreed with you, that that five-foot-wide sidewalk, once it's placed, they did not want any green space between the sidewalk and the actual road. So you can imagine my concern if that were to come to pass, even though they've only agreed with you, what you can do in the road right of way is a five-foot-wide sidewalk. If the road commission did insist that the township was to pave or fill in with concrete between the edge of your sidewalk, where it's shown in the drawing, at the 32-feet mark all the way out to the center of the road. This is still my question. And it hasn't been answered, and I want it answered by the road commission in writing, saying that they're not gonna fill that in. Because if they do, you can imagine what we're gonna have from the corner of Club Road to the corner of South Streets Highway. Okay? I understand that it might hold up your project a little bit. I understand we're still gonna be paving, and we're still gonna have all this stuff in place next year, where we can go ahead and get the parking lot put in while all this equipment is still in town. If indeed Wilkinson is the one who is working on this, I don't know. And as regard, when you were talking about the River Street project, I never came forward and said anything about that. I'm only concerned, you know, and it's very selfish, because that's my property, that's my livelihood. I bought that property to run my business there. And that's all I've got. I mean, you know where I was at before, and what I had before, and what I gave up to buy that. And to run my business there. That's... My whole life is invested in that. So, I gotta protect myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Public comment is closed. Board comment?
I have a board comment. I'd like to respond to some accusations that were made regarding the parking lot. It says that it was inferred that we were doing the parking lot to benefit the owner of the old lumberyard, Montegoat, Mr. Wack. Owns that property now, as far as this thing from my mind. If they're gonna do self-serving, it probably would've been sold to Craig Waldron, you know, and used for private use rather than public use. We decided to use that property for public use to benefit the public, to benefit future use, not that we necessarily need parking spots today, but if you're going to expand your downtown area, which has been one of the priorities of the DDA, many of the business owners here, they wanna see more business. We can't have just one anchor store, McClutchie's. People are not gonna stop in town to shop in one store. They're gonna go to Katski's, so they can walk around the Gaslight Street, and shop in many stores. Kathy told me that herself. She's losing a lot of business. We need more than one anchor store here. We need something to attract people rather than just services here, which, you know, we have lots of services. We have very little, very little retail, that people can just walk around town and shop and enjoy their day. Parking lot would improve that for the future. And that's what this board is supposed to do. It's supposed to look 10, 20 years down the line, not what we need today, or what we may need at the next festival. That's not our job. Our primary job is to improve the township, to let it grow, to give it space to be able to breathe, to have a better town in 10 years. Because it takes that long for things to turn around. So, that is a misnomer, made up in somebody's brain, if they had one. So let me tell you the story about Kathy McClutchie, since I brought her name up, and I have permission to tell this story. She couldn't be here today, she has a prior engagement. She went to the Trump rally, good for her. Kathy came to us when she heard that the township board was thinking of selling the property of Craig Waldron, and she goes, "Please don't do that." She came to our office and sat down, and she says, "Please do not sell that. That is the viable, only viable, community parking space that is owned by the township left, that would benefit the heart of the downtown area." She says, "My people have to share when they come here to park on the street. They have to share with boats, RVs, and people that are at the 310 or whatever." And she doesn't even see that my store is open, because all these big vehicles are right in front of my store. And I'm sure everybody's gone by there and seen that, you know? And I don't disparage 310 at all. But it proves that it's not helping the small businesses in this township. It's good that we have all this street parking, but it's not enough. And the employees have to share with the customers, you know? And that makes it more difficult. If your employees are sharing the same spots that are near your, their work, that the customers are, where are the customers gonna park? We don't wanna be like Harbor Springs, that they sell parking spots like six blocks away for their employees, and they have to walk in. They have to actually buy a parking spot for these businesses. They have to buy a parking spot for their employees away from downtown. I know, because I talked to Kathy, she owns a store out there as well. So, she came to us, and she says, "When the trailhead parking lot was reconfigured, and we lost parking spaces there, and we were looking into doing the sewer, and the street scape was being planned, and all that kinda stuff, this particular spot was designated as a possible, a probable, parking area for a parking lot." And she says, "We've been promised this for many, many years. We look back, we look back at the history of this, we went back into the records as far as we could go. And yeah, this space was, you know, projected to be a community off-site, off-street parking lot. And it's been in our master plan for many years that there's going to be off-street parking."
It's been proposed since 2008, because I have the document.
Yes. So, we looked at that, and because that came up for possible sale to a private person for private use, we said, "Would it be better to keep it for public use, not knowing if we'd get it done or not, but... Or would it be better to, you know, sell it, take the money, and add it to the general fund?" We decided, since we had sold several properties before that, that we would retain this for the possible parking lot. So, fast forward to the sewers, the construction, the contractors are in town. We talked about going out and seeing if we could get a good price on this parking lot. Because of all the contractors in town, we could probably save money benefiting the taxpayers. Because this is the thing. You can postpone these public work projects forever with all these strategic moves. But, the point is, it increases the cost eventually. People tell us, "Well, if we did the sewers when this was first proposed, we could've gotten free, because the federal government is gonna come in and pay for all of it." And then, later on, "Oh, we could've got it for a million dollars, because the federal government was gonna help us with that." Well, now they're 15 million.
You're just liar.
That's the point. You can delay 'em, delay 'em, and just, you know, and then people look back and say, "Well, you should've, should've, should've." Well, this was the opportunity to act. And so, we acted, and we went out for bids, and we got the due care plan that was suggested, that's in there. And we got the permit to move forward, but now we're being obstructed. And so, we will proceed as responsible board members on that. But I just wanna give everybody a little history. Has nothing to do, really, with Craig Waldron. Has nothing to do with Kathy McClutchie, except that's where we got the history from, because a lot of this stuff isn't necessarily written down. And has everything to do with trying to improve the downtown for not only this use, but future use, for future growth. Because we have empty spots, we have empty buildings. We have buildings that the owners are going to turn over because of age, or, you know, whatever. We wanna be able to maximize that growth potential. And that's what that's about. And then there was one other accusation made, that we were gutless by not running. No. No. We all have our personal reasons why we're not running. Mine is because my mother is 93 years old and in very poor health, and my dad died in April. And I can only take so much stress. And as you know, these meetings are very stressful, and it's intended to be, because it's humiliation, it's harassment, it's lies, it's crap. But it gets thrown out every meeting. And I don't need the extra stress, I have to focus on my parents and my family. And I decided, I've served this community eight years, I would love to serve it another term, but I can only take so much stress. So, I'll be looking forward to turning over the reins to Jonathan and Sue November 20th. But, and I'm gonna thank the community for allowing me to serve them for the eight years that I have. And I hope that the little bit I did to improve this community did improve the quality of life for the citizens. So, thank you. That's my board comment.
Any other board comments?
I have nothing. So, the parking lot. I ride my bicycle downtown, and it's dangerous riding your bicycle downtown. The way that the bumpkins are, it's horrible. And I see elderly people with walkers, and I see people, elderly people, and some younger people that have those electric carts behind their cars that have to get those off. And they try and go into a business or an establishment. It's very difficult for them, and so unsafe. That parking lot would really help that. They could just pull in the parking lot, unload, and go. I'm not probably far from that. You know? But, the demographics of this township is pretty much retirees and people that are in need of safer places to park. So, I don't understand. The due care thing, and this has been beat to death. We have professionals looking at this. They are not retired. They are on Johnny on the spot with us. And they have confessed that they will follow through the due care program. If it does not go through, then the parking lot will not go through. They are following through with it. They are the professionals. We are taking their word for it. So, the criticism that we get, and being thrown under the bus for trying to take care of the contamination and everything, I mean, if I lived, you know, near that area, I would want that taken care of. S and P. And, you know, we're trying to do that. You know, for people that are using that trail, or for you with your flowers, your business, putting those on tables of weddings and stuff like that. I really think that you should really feel that we are looking out for your better interest of taking care of that contamination, that we're finally doing something about it. And unfortunately, the longer this goes on, the more expensive it's going to be. So, you know, I'm not running, and I'll say it. I'm really tired of the negative comments of each meeting. And I don't need that in my life. I service this community in many ways, and this was just another way that I wanted to help my community since I've lived here, since I've been seven years old. So, I help in a lot of different ways, through my church and other volunteer things. So, I just, as I stated when I first got on the board, I just wish that you would be a little bit more positive and not so angry every time you get up. And the meetings seemed to be going fine until Mr. McGuinness got up and started with his program, like he does at the end of every public comment. And it's very sad that I see this going on in the meetings. It's not this board. And I hope that people viewing this at home can see really what's going on here, that we are trying to, you know, do something better. My parents raised me in be in service. Too much is given, much is expected. Leave something better than what you found it. If you see a tissue on the floor, pick it up. Try to leave the community a better place than what it was. And that's all that we're trying to do. The name-calling and the rolling of the eyes, and we need to work together for the community... The name-calling and the rolling of the eyes, and we need to work together for the community. We want this to be a nice, safe place. That's all we want. And I just feel like there's just so much aminosity with a few people, that it just gets this pot boiling, and it causes so much division, you know? And the tempers start flaring and attitudes, and it's really sad. So, like I said, I seem to feel like everything goes okay with the meeting until the very end, when, you know, Mr. McGinnis gets up there and starts with his public comment. So, I hope for you that are viewing at home, and that you that are here, and the future board that takes over, can understand a little bit from where we're coming from, in the dynamics of what we're trying to do, and why we are stepping down. So, enjoy the rest of the fall, and get out and vote. Jay's been doing a great job with his crew, voting and getting everything up to speed, and with all the dynamics of that changing, and rules and regulations, and on and on. So, we're pretty fortunate to live where we're at, and be in this community and be a part of it. So, I hope you can all do your best and just try and have a positive attitude. Thank you.
Next.
Sure, I'll go next. It is disturbing that there is a group who has-
Small group.
A very small group, but the truth never gets in the way of them creating drama and attention for themselves. It's fine for me, I ran for office, I was accused of things that frankly are absurd and were absurd on their face, and I didn't call it out in a public meeting because I didn't want to embarrass anyone. But as a result, someone else is going to sit in my seat, and if that makes them happy, it makes me happy. Because I will not trade my integrity to win a board seat. It's not worth it. I came here to clean some things up. I have diligently worked through a number of problems, certainly not by myself, this is a very team. Chris has done the lion's share of keeping us on track and plowing through the list and litany of problems, from the crap in the basement that was left unintended for decades, to an oath book that is utterly incomplete and embarrassing. Those things seem like small things, but it leaves us utterly dependent on people's memories for how things happened and what was ever intended. So, I did run, I was not afraid to run, and in fact, Mr. McGinnis, you encouraged me to run several years ago. But I do find it amusing that you are so smug about these things when you have a piece of property and that you are having undertaxed deliberately, and taking advantage of this township monetarily. So, there is no permit, you have someone living in a shed, being assessed as a shed, and it's never been reassessed as a dwelling unit. It's not even permitted as a dwelling unit. And I've had enough of listening to you accuse me of being corrupt, so I'm putting it on the record today. Either fess up or follow the eviction notice, because it's not fair to this township for you not to pay your share. Thank you, that's what I got.
Jay.
I've got a couple things. First, I'd like to thank Chris for a very successful UIA audit, that's Unemployment Agency.
Did anything talk on that ticket?
Yeah, the auditor wasn't, she was very good, but very specific about what she needed to have done. We had two issues. One was with the police, we didn't charge for their uniform allowance, but that's because they have a contract that says not to charge for the uniform allowance, so we had a little conflict there, but it got resolved. And then, the second one was, we hired kids that were, whatever, in their teens, not eighteen, but less than eighteen, for the park system, and so, we took out, or put them into the UIA category, and they don't belong in that category. So, we ended up, all said and done, passing the audit and then getting a nine hundred dollar refund, so it worked out great.
Awesome, thank you, Chris.
Along the same line, Chris has been key in helping us get the cemetery turned around, along with Bridget Brown. Bridget basically got into Palm and made sure we had the computer system, that was supposed to happen with the last board, and I'll go into that in just a minute. And basically matched up all our cards with all of the, with what, how to set it up in the computer system, so that we can create reports and we do other things to know where we are. We're presently in the validation phase of making sure that the computer system matches the cards and matches the cemeteries. By that, I mean, you want to make sure, if you have a vacant lot, you want to make sure, or parcel, or slip, or whatever you want to think of it as, you want to make sure that it's in all three categories. It's in your computer system, your paper system, and it's available, because you verify that nobody was actually buried there, and you can do that kind of work.
Very interesting.
Yeah, and so, the point I wanted to make there is, we now have some data. We have, between Oak Hill and Ohioville cemeteries, we've sold or occupied fifty-three-hundred-and-fifty-one spaces, we have available in total seventeen-hundred-and-ninety-seven. Some people may not know, we actually have two cemeteries too. So, and then within Oakville, there's roughly thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-two available, and within Ohioville, roughly, or four-hundred-and-sixty-five. I say roughly simply because we want to validate and make sure that all comes to pass, so we're getting close. But what's interesting is, the person to my right, Jan here, volunteered to basically take on the cemetery issue with the last board, and got no support whatsoever to actually make it happen. So, she came forward with a pitch, a presentation, here's what I'm going to do, and got absolutely no support from the board to make it happen. I won't go into names, but, you know, it was completely a board, a lack of support. And yet, it was, we were able to get it done. And yet, even though the board bought two things, or two-
Licenses.
Licenses for Palm, they only needed one, but they couldn't allow somebody to come in and actually, you know, get a job done around here. So, lots of talk, no action. So, when you talk about cowards, you know, put it in the proper category, who's a coward in that situation? That's all I got to say, thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm last. Ron Odenwald, where are you?
Down the hallway.
Right up the hall.
I want to thank Chief Temple, and Kelsey, and Ron, who meets every week now on repairing a building. I'm sure many of our constituents are unaware that we have substantial maintenance problems with this building, especially downstairs. And this place, I'll just lay it on the line, it's a goddamn fire trap.
It is.
People are, if we don't get this fixed, it's amazing that no one has died. When we, we almost had a fire a few months ago, when a lighted sign started burning up. Thank God, Chris and I were here, and Doug came right away, and Doug made it very clear. An hour later, the building would have been burnt to the ground, and we have no fire suppression in this building whatsoever.
Supposed to be.
Even though we paid for one.
Yep, supposed to be.
But they're supposed to be. But, Ron, could you come in, please? What I said while you were out is, I was thanking you, the library, and the police for the great work they did on the two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, of which we have no copays. So, it's really, really good. And I was thanking you and the group, and telling folks how bad a condition the building was, and I would just ask if it's okay with the board for Mr. Odenwald to update the board on this particular grant.
So, there is an in-kind match that is required with the grant, it's seventeen-five. It is being checked-
Seventeen thousand five.
Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, offsetting the two-hundred. So, the total amount is two-seventeen-five-hundred. That money is in planning, it's in our meeting time, it's in the committee's expenses.
Right.
Yeah, so, but what we've accomplished so far, and when I say "we," I mean myself, library director Kelly Ratauski, Chief Gordon Temple, library board member Patty Hall, library board member John Webb, with the occasional presence of, you know, Sue Fisher, Kathy Cole, some other people that have kind of wandered in and out, but the core of the committee, I think, has done an incredible job of shopping this stuff, of bidding it, of holding the vendors' feet to the fire. We have successfully done and paid for, with advance money that will be refunded. The gutters, the consultant for the basement wall, the cameras. Starting Tuesday of next week is Foundation Systems of Michigan doing the waterproofing and the downstairs storage. We're currently bidding the additional electrical for dedicated circuits for the cameras, for the fire alarm, and for the sumps. So, that is an unplanned expense, we expect it to be under five thousand. It's not going to delay any of the projects, and it can all take place simultaneously. The money remaining is for the downstairs updates and remodels, the police training room, the floor.
You did some technology upgrades that you did.
We also did, we had to buy a new server for the township government because of a crash, we were using a borrowed server, and even the borrowed server crashed once, so Police Department was able to add some technology that unplanned into the grant. So-
Parking lot lighting.
Parking lot lighting, bid, you know, bid, done, little bidder got the job, very happy with the job that White Pines did. To the point of where we've had other entities approach us, saying, "My God, this parking lot lights, who did that, what did it cost?" So, we've referred that out a little bit, and we're getting to wrapping it up, we're actually seeing some progress. There will be still some stuff happening after the first of the year, I think most of that basement project, other than the waterproofing, the constructions will happen.
And we're going to finally get some clean water.
Yeah, water softener, I'm sorry, water filter, water softener in that bit. The fire system was just, you know, that's just unconscionable, that back in ninety-three, ninety-four, you know, it's on the plans, it doesn't exist, it's like the elevator that's on the plans, doesn't exist. And, you know, you can't even ask for accountability, everybody involved in those projects are dead, literally. Even going back to the engineers at Wade Trim, they're deceased, so we just got to pick it up, and, you know, and Kim, as you were saying, you know, do the right thing. What's the right thing for the township? It's find the grant money, spend the grant money, and, you know, monitor the results, and that's what we've done, so thank you.
Trying to give the money back to the people, you know?
All right.
I've got one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to mention about the election. First of all, we've had, we were late, I mentioned this before, but the state was late, or somebody was late in getting the election source, the information to get the ballots out on time. They were two weeks late in arrival to us, and we had eight-hundred-and-fifty ballots out to the community, based on permanent ballots and other related, I'll say, applications within twenty-four hours, less than twenty-four hours, actually.
Wow.
So, that was day one, that was October third and fourth. Today, we're roughly at over a thousand fifty ballots that have been sent out. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I know it's in that range. And then, we've had roughly six-hundred-and-seventy-five ballots returned, I know it's in that range. So, I suspect by the end of next week, or by actually, the end of day on Tuesday, the fifth, we'll have well over eight-hundred ballots, absentee ballots. And that means that in here, in the pole room, the precinct room, we'll probably have over eight-hundred people coming through here as well. So, I'm only guessing, based on past elections, but we'll have at least sixteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred people voting in this election. For anybody who needs a ballot, they can come up to the front desk, fill out an application, and receive a ballot immediately from Amy. If Amy's not there, they can see me, and I'll get it to them as quick as possible. But I don't do it as fast as Amy, so they better, they may have to wait. What else I want to say? And then, as far as absentee ballot, election laws keep changing, it's just, it's like trying to hit a moving target. You can get an absentee ballot, and you can drop it off, you can mail it in, you can vote it at election day if you want to stand in line. So, there's many different ways for you to vote the absentee ballot. And at election day, we hope that that's going to be, we hope, well, let me put it this way, we're not going to tolerate any communication, if you will, from one party to the other party, you know, about Trump, or about Harris, or about any of the other candidates, you know? If there's any communication going on election day within the precinct, we'll let the person know that's not acceptable. If it persists, the person will be asked to leave. If he doesn't leave, we'll call the police. You know, I'm very serious about maintaining order in the election, so it's only fair to everybody. People that are quiet about that, want people to do something about that, but they're quiet about it, so they don't, you know, speak up and do that. So, I'm going to keep ordering, the police precinct, they've got a great group of people planning to do this election, and I don't know what else to anticipate, but we're trying to, we'll anticipate everything, we'll have backup generators, we'll have whatever backup we need, we have a backup tagulator. So, we're going to have everything in place for this election that you can possibly think of. Somebody asked me, "What if you have a fire?" I said, "I don't know, I'm going to be the first one out," so, there we go. Call in for help, of course. Anyways, that's all I got to say.
Good job, Jay.
Okay, so, to my board comments, I'll try and go quick. Want to thank Beth Henderson. Stand up, Beth, please.
For what?
Just stand up, wave your hand. She's been working diligently, you know, we're all talking about systems and having records, and Beth has been working diligently since she was appointed to straighten out the BRICS situation. So, I just wanted to thank you for that and recognize you.
Oh, for the veterans?
Yeah.
Oh.
They're all in the computer now.
Wonderful. That's awesome. I want to thank Doug. Once, last year, we planted well over two thousand bulbs. This year, we, between Doug and myself, we will plant, or will have planted, another fifteen-hundred.
Wow.
So, that's going really well. I just-
Where is that yet, are you?
I think Doug's all done.
Oh, I said I'd help.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I understand, but Doug wanted to do it, and he did most of it, almost all of it, there's very little left.
Good.
And I saw what he was doing, and, you know, he's a better gardener than us, anyway.
I've been seeing a bunch of squirrels go around with bulbs in their mouth, so I'm just kind of wondering.
Okay. I do want to talk about the parking lot, I'm not going to relitigate here, but I will tell you, Station 310, the owners are very excited about that parking lot, and they're really looking forward to a future extension that was proposed by OHM, is it OHM? To go from one parking lot to another, and that's really going to help his business in particular, at least that's what he thinks. I do want to talk about the Do Care Plan man, because that was very good points. We have an environmental consultant at Traverse City who's been doing this here for over twenty years. He ran the Do Care Plan by the, not the EPA, the DEQ, or EGLE, or whatever their name is this time. And it is extremely extensive, tens of pages, and that is part of the contract. And that is why the cost is so high, because of the material and the way it has to be handled. In fact, it's so expensive that this particular bid that we bid on today was only for the parking lot. The lighting and the sidewalk will wait, and this particular contract with Wilkinson- The lighting and the sidewalk will wait, and this particular contract with Wilkinson is only for the parking lot for now. That gives, and as you read in your packet from the engineer, that gives our engineer more time to work with the road commission on the sidewalk issue. But I also want to point out that the road commission wrote a letter that you've all seen, to the road commission, and said, suggestions to the township about what to put in front or around that sidewalk are only suggestions. There are no requirements, remember that? No requirements whatsoever. These are just suggestions. And, you know, we like suggestions from the experts, so they'll be considered. So, as we proceed with this parking lot, the only thing that we will get there is we will have our parking lot with the appropriate pipes laid for the electric.
Conduit? Conduit.
Conduit, right. So, unfortunately, this is sewer-related, the contractors are going to be finished with all of Phase 1 by November 15th, with the exception of paving three roads. So, that means that if, unfortunately, if we have to wait till spring, that's going to substantially increase our costs because that equipment by those contractors will no longer be here. They're pulling out. The Phase 2 are different contractors. So, we will have some damages, I believe, as far as increased costs go, as well as I don't know anybody an explanation on why I didn't run. I don't know anybody anything. If I don't want to run, I don't want to run. And I'm not going over that again. I just wanted to get the sewers done. And I achieved my objectives, at least to get them started. But I will address this other business. Gutless cowards. The only gutless cowards I know are the people that go online and lie, or cherry pick to provide falsehoods to further their cave dweller agenda. C-A-V-E, cave, citizens against virtually everything. And that's what we have here. That's the way I see it. The only cowards are the ones that manipulate facts or manufacture facts for their own aggrandizement and their own political worth. So, I think Mrs. Bairdman, Jack Bairdman's wife, said it best. There's a problem all over the country, all over northern Michigan, where people will not run for local public office because they're tired of the half a dozen to a dozen people that constantly yell, scream, carry on, and try to stop what a legislative body is doing for the majority. So, board members, you've heard me say before, both publicly and privately, we represent 3,000 voters, 2,910, whatever that is. We don't represent a mob. We don't represent 12 people. And don't care what happens to me, as long as I can walk out of here with my head held high with all the stuff that we've done and all the major improvements that we've made. The people are not stupid. They watch these things on our stream and other streams and look at the, look at the stuff online, and they know. Trust me. The people are not stupid. The mob and the cabal and the Breakfast Club, they want you to think that the electorate is stupid. And we're all stupid. Trust me. They're not, and we're not. Do we make mistakes? Yes. That's one thing this board, I'm very proud of this board, because we put all this crap out there since day one. A lot of this is coming up because of the transparency that we've started. It's not hidden from anybody. So, I just think it's, again, I just want to say the only gutless cowards are the ones that can't come talk to you. I can't remember how many times I've said, if you see a problem, come talk to me, we'll take care of it, yada, 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 yada. But it's easier just to whine and carry on and, but that's their right under the First Amendment. But believe me, the people's, no. The people see through it. They know who these people are. They know the history. They know they're cave dwellers. So, I'm not even worried about it. Again, the only cowards are those few in the mob. Is there any other board comments?
Well said, though.
Motion to adjourn.
I know.
Thank you all.